It looks different.
Before I forget.
It does look different.
I meant to Tom.
Does yours look different, too?
The time is now seven o'clock and I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, July 23rd, 2018. Jackie, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Carrubas?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Mr. Resak?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
We do have a quorum. Mr. Carrubas, can you lead us in the pledge?
I would be happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Today is one of those special days with exactly at 7:05, we need to have a budget hearing. We still have some time, so I'm going to move to the board's salutes. We just have a few. Ms. Peel, can you begin?
The board salutes the Expanding Learning Opportunities Consortium, known as ELO, which was recognized recently by district administration as a district of distinction. The consortium includes District 204, Naperville District 203, and District 200. On behalf of the districts, ELO staff submitted the award-winning application titled "Breaking Down Silos: Three Districts Joining Forces to Expand Learning Opportunities for High School Students." Congratulations to all involved.
Thank you.
And Kip was part of this, and he's not with us anymore. That's to ban.
Ms. Price?
Okay. The board salutes the District 204 steps athletes and coaches who have been busy in competitions recently. Several athletes participated in the inaugural Unified Cup held here in Chicago, including Ryan McDonough, Grant Collins, and Mark Jerabek. Coaches for the team were Blake Klein and Kim Pelkey. Also, and this is very exciting, Grace Sebold participated in the Special Olympics USA Games held in Seattle. Grace earned gold medals in the 200 individual medley and the 400 medley relay, where she swam the butterfly leg. She also received an invitation to try out for the U.S. Paralympics team for the Games in Australia in 2019, and was offered a spot on the U.S. team for the World Games in Abu Dhabi next March. So that's incredible. Lastly, our Special Olympics athletes has received a tremendous amount of press recently, including Ryan McDonough, being interviewed on ABC 7. Congratulations to all the athletes and coaches.
Thank you. And I think, Ms. Demming?
National Merit Scholarships. The board salutes Niqua Valley's Michael Perot, who was awarded a National Merit Scholarship from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, sponsored by Purdue University. Colleges select their scholarship winners from among the finalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. College-sponsored awards provide between 500 and 2,000 annually for up to four years of undergraduate study. Michael will major in aerospace engineering. Congratulations, Michael.
Thank you. And I think we have 45 seconds of awkward silence until 7:05.
It's your cue, Jay. Awkward silence. What a Jeopardy theme song.
That won't be from Jay.
I'm thinking of the Tom Jones song, you know?
He has a T-shirt that says it.
Jay's never silent.
Who makes these rolls?
I don't know. I just follow him.
Is there any penalty for starting at 7:05?
I don't know. I don't want to go to 7:05, Jay.
Should I be breaking?
The time is now 7:05, and I'm calling to order a budget hearing for 2019 budget. Jay?
I'm waiting for the screen where I can...
His watch is different.
Go through the flip charts.
There were?
Huh?
There were?
No.
Oh.
All right, I'll get that.
Okay.
Wait for the next 7:05.
You're welcome. While we're waiting, we have not received any feedback or comments from the public on our budget hearing? I guess we're still waiting.
No.
No one has signed up?
No one's signed up to speak today for that.
Okay.
Oh, there we go.
There we are.
You didn't receive any public comments? There's none today. Mr. Strang? Oh, he's still not.
All right, we're in good shape.
Did we receive any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
No, we did not. Good evening, board members. Tonight is the final step in the budget process, a process that began last January when we started providing the Board of Education with forecasts on what our finances would look like, both our revenues and expenditures. This budget hearing is the second from final step in the process. Later in tonight's agenda, I'll ask for the Board of Education to vote to approve this budget, and then it will become our spending plan. We'll go over the budget highlights. We'll talk about the operating and non-operating funds and our next steps. One thing that I want to state is that we're passing the budget earlier than we have in the past. This is July 23rd. Historically, we passed it in September. The state still has not finalized what we're going to receive in evidence-based funding, and I expect that it'll be more than what we've got budgeted next year. I'm going to suggest that we go back to the September timeline so that we have a more solid number on our budgets. First off is that we received the Certificate of Excellence for fiscal year 2017. That award is given to school districts for how they report their finances, that their finances are reported in an accurate and truthful and transparent manner, which is available for all parties to see. The irony of it is you can run a terrible budget and be over budget, and if you report it accurately that you've got a terrible budget, you can receive this award.
Don't tell everybody that.
But we fortunately run a great budget. It's a balanced budget. The board's well aware of what's happening with our budget, and so in addition to that, we report it with transparency. So we received this again for fiscal year 2017, and I think now this has been close to a dozen years that we've received the Certificate of Excellence from ASBO International. I wanted to show you some historical information. First off is our revenue by source, and you can see that local sources, followed by state sources, and then federal sources are our primary sources of increase in revenue. The purple, which is our local sources, has increased. I'm going to point out fiscal year 2018, it actually looks like our revenue dropped that year, which was the fiscal year which just ended. If we had stayed under the old funding model, the general state aid funding model, it would have dropped, and that's what we budgeted last year, was the general state aid funding model, because the evidence-based funding formula hadn't been passed yet. That was passed after our budget. So when you look at fiscal year 2019, what you'll notice is that both our local and our state revenue increased, which is a good thing for the school district. I anticipate that that will happen again in fiscal year 20. Revenue by fund, you can see from 2018 what was budgeted and what is budgeted for fiscal year 2019 in the gold. We're actually budgeting more into the education fund, and that's because we have the availability to do that now with the Consumer Price Index going up and property values going up. We've not maxed out on our limiting rate in the education fund. We're well below the $4, so we're able to put the money in the fund where we need it. And you can see that in operations and maintenance and in debt services, the next two funds, we're actually pulling in just a little bit less money in both of those funds than we did in fiscal year 2018. When the economy wasn't going so well and property values were dropping, we couldn't levy all of the money into the education fund like we needed to. And in May, April and May, we came to the board and asked for transfers of funds from temporary loans from funds to the education fund. Now that that's reversing, you know, it's very possible, and I anticipate that very likely that we won't need to loan any funds into the education fund this year. So that's a positive product of the economy turning around for us. Our revenues have gone up, and so have our expenditures, and you can see that the education fund is our greatest expenditure. That's where we pay for the salaries of all of our staff. That's Fund 10. That's where we pay for the operating funds of the schools. So when they're buying textbooks, or paper, or markers, or whatever, that's the fund that really supports the classrooms. The next highest fund is our debt services fund, and if you look at fiscal year 2018, it's kind of a pea-green color there. You can see that debt services actually is a little larger than the other years. And it's a little larger because we paid off our $10 million in debt certificates. So that was a good thing. It's a plan that, you know, the board had had for 10 years to pay those off, and we did pay those off, so that's great. If you look at the rest of the years, we're pretty stable with the same debt service schedule, which is around $27 or $28 million. But there's that little larger blip in 2018 because we paid those debt certificates off. The next largest is the blue, which is operations and maintenance, followed by transportation. Working cash and tort is very small, and we do not have a fire prevention and life safety fund, so there's nothing that shows up in that area. What you see also happening with the economy changing is that our tax rate is starting to fall. That's not to say that we're not going to levy additional funds in taxes. What that says is that our property values are increasing much higher than the Consumer Price Index, which is what we can levy in new money. And when that happens, the tax rate drops. When the tax rate is increasing, like it did in 2012, 2013, and 2014, that's when I usually get the calls in the spring, and homeowners are receiving their tax bills. They're saying, hey, I see my tax rate has really increased for the school district. Same happens with the fire department, and the police department, and the park district. We just happen to be the largest taxing body in the area. But now that the economy's better and the tax rate's falling, this spring, I didn't receive any phone calls, even though we increased taxes by 2.1% through our levy. So that's another positive trend. Property values are going up by 5%. Consumer Price Index is going up by 2.1%. Folks are selling their houses for more. The value of their houses are worth more, and they're maybe more comfortable in paying a little bit more to the school system to keep us running. So our fiscal year 2019 budget for our operating funds is exactly what we showed you in June. Nothing has changed with that. Education fund is our largest, with total revenues of $286,798,395. Our operations and maintenance is at $28,670,31, followed by transportation, $16,961,38, and then I R R, working cash and tort, are our smallest. Our total revenue for fiscal year 19 and operating funds is $340,906,917. I would anticipate that we're probably going to pick up about $3 million more through the evidence-based funding model, and I'm really anxious to see if the state comes through with that. That will be interesting. Our expenditures, again, education is $283,576,912. Operations and maintenance is $29,781,194. Transportation is $18,322,840. And I'll point out in both of those funds that we are spending more than we're bringing in in those funds, and that's a good thing. We can spend down those fund balances, because when the economy was poor and we needed to levy our money, we were levying it into those funds, and now we can draw those down and put the money into the education fund. So that's a good thing. I R R, working cash and tort, really not much that we're levying into those funds. And our total, at the end of the year, our excess will be $1,247,261. Our fund balance as a percent of our expenditures will still be above 30%, 30.31%. It may be closer to 31%, but that's where we've been since Dave Holm was doing this 15 years ago. We've always hovered around 30%, 31%, 32% in our fund balances, and that's a good place to be. It'd be nice if we were larger than that, had fund balances larger than that. We could get some things done, but we've been able to hold our own as a school district, and as efficiently as we operate, to be able to do that really says something. That means we're really watching our dollars and spending them wisely. So the highlights, all of our salaries and benefits expenses have been updated. We went through the teachers' negotiations and are continuing with the IPCA negotiations, but the salary and benefits have been updated. Our custodial and maintenance contract, which was recently awarded, has been updated. I talked about the fund balance. I talked about our fund balance as a percent of our expenditures. Our categorical payments in this budget, like the fiscal year 2018 budget, are prorated at about 92%, depending upon which one of the categories you're looking at. The aggregate's about 92%, and that's holding pretty stable as of now. For fiscal year 18, we received three of four categorical payments. Mr. Carrubas asked a question about how our categoricals were coming in, and when I looked it up to respond to his request, I noticed that they're expecting to pay us in the next two days. So we'll keep our eyes out for our fourth categorical for fiscal year 2018. So if that happens, I can hope, and I think pretty positively, that we'll receive all four categoricals for fiscal year 2019. Our debt services, this is the loan that we're paying back for the construction of all of our schools. I've talked to you all several times about that several, several years ago, we leveled off our debt service schedule so that our amount that we're levying every December to pay off our schools is about the same thing. It's about $27 or $28 million. And the reason for that is so that, you know, the tax bill, when it hits the homeowners, is jumping and dropping dependent upon what bond payment is due that particular year. So you can see it's pretty flat until we reach fiscal year 27, when we've just got over, just over $15 million of buildings to pay off at that particular point in time. When that happens, our tax rate will drop substantially, and there might be some opportunities for the district to think about doing some things. Our fiscal year 2019 budget for the non-operating funds, which is our debt service and our capital projects, you can see that we're going to levy this December, $27,262,71. So when I come to you and you approve the levy, there's two levies. There's the operating levy and the bond levy. That's the amount of money that we'll be asking our taxpayers to pay for those buildings that I just showed you on the blue bar chart. We'll pay off roughly $26,429,619. You can see that we've got a projected ending fund balance in debt services of $10,117,479. That's as of June 30. We make our bond payments to two installments, one on December 30 and one on June 30, just before June 30. So that'll be much lower in December. It'll probably be closer to $1 million or $2 million that's remaining in that until we do the levy. Our capital projects, our beginning fund balance is $6,482,961. We're expecting about $805,000 in developer contributions, so that will add to that. We've got some expenditures in capital outlay, where we still have some money remaining for air conditioning, and Mr. DePaul will be working on that. And so we're looking at a final balance in our projected ending fund balance of $494,997,961. Just two weeks ago, we received the second installment of our payment of our Country Lakes property. As you recall, we sold that to the Naperville Park District for $1,850,000 to come in two installments. Both of those installments, the one a year ago and the one just a couple of weeks ago, will be deposited into capital projects. And when we sell the second half of our 25 acres to MI Homes, that will be deposited in there. So I expect that our capital projects funds will continue to increase, and that's going to be an opportunity for us to get some maintenance done, to get some safety and security completed, to continue to work on the elementary air conditioning of classrooms. And Mr. DePaul and I, at the direction of the superintendent, are working on a plan to address some of our deferred maintenance needs. We spoke just last week, and I started our prioritization of that work. We're going to really focus in on our building envelopes, which is our roof, our masonry, and our HVAC systems. Those are the core systems that protect the building. So our first effort in working on some of the deferred maintenance are going to be in those areas. And then the carpet, the drywall, the ceiling tiles, and more of the aesthetics are going to be further down our list and trying to tackle that. So the total ending fund balance in those, we're hoping to be around $15,155,440. It could be more, because our developers are really starting to kick into gear with the sale of Wagner Farms. If that construction kicks off more than we anticipated in the next few years, we'll start to receive contributions from Wagner Farms, which will also go in here. So it's really a positive place that we're being paid off those debt certificates. We've sold that property, and now we've got some funds that are available for some of the needs around the district. Capital projects funds have to be used in the area of capital projects. They have to be used for our buildings, our facilities, our drywall, our masonry, our concrete, our parking lots. So we'll be coming to the board with a plan to address some of that. The next steps later in tonight's agenda, I'll step to the podium and ask the board to approve this as our spending plan. It's the same plan that you saw in the tentative budget. The budget has been on display since the day after our June board meeting, and we've received no comments. We've got both our auditors in, internal and external auditors in, and I've met with them several times, and they've given us some good feedback. And we're going to be meeting with the internal auditors in the next week, because they've already got some thoughts on ways that we can do some things differently with our procurement cards and our student activity accounts. So that's been a good thing. And we're going to bring both of those groups to the Board of Education this winter, so you can hear from both of them. And then, believe it or not, we'll start working on a forecast here shortly for fiscal year 2020. And for the new cabinet members, we start working on that in November and December, and by January, if they have needs, they got to tell me about it, because they got to plug that stuff in, or, you know, if they wait till March or April, it's a little late to put it in the budget. So with that, board members, I'll take any questions.
Questions, comments?
I had a question for, you know, there's the tariffs that are going on. Are they going to affect, or are you aware of any, like, building supplies and, you know, maintenance needs?
That's a great question. I've not heard of anything yet, and I would expect that, you know, we would start to see something with steel if we had any major construction going on. But our paper bid, which you're going to approve in the consent agenda, was up substantially, and fuel prices and tariffs were one of the reasons why both vendors said that the paper prices are up. So that's the first that we had heard of that. So that's a good question.
Hearing none, the chair can call the meeting to order, but I need a motion to adjourn the budget hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Jackie, just call the roll.
To close the budget hearing.
To close the budget hearing.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Resak?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
It's now time for public comment for non-agenda items. If you're here to speak to an agenda item, that comment will be taken immediately prior to that item. 30 minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comments represent the voice and the opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. And our speaker is Sally Cleven. Hi, Sally.
Hi, Sarah.
I'm telling Sally the rules, and she could probably tell us the rules. Thanks for coming out, because I see the rest of our...
I know. Where's my fan? Summer. Okay, hi, it's nice to see you. I know, I missed you last time. I'm so nervous. I'm here all the time, and I skip one time, and I'm like...
Have a seat.
I know, I'm like, ah, because I've never done this before.
We don't have these meetings very often, anyone.
Well, you have nice colors on for me.
Thank you. Summertime. Okay. I'd like to first acknowledge the work put forth by the administration regarding the upcoming year district budget. It's never an easy process, and trying to follow the moving targets set forth by the state does not help. So far, it's a pleasant surprise that maybe the state will provide much-needed funding for education as a whole, and in particular, to District 204. Time will tell. And no doubt we can use the funding, but where those funds are allocated is of utmost importance to the educational success of our students. As such, it is imperative that the issue of...wait for it...oversight classrooms be addressed and a workable viable solution be implemented to avoid the continuous large class sizes that have become a way of life in this district to the detriment of many students. It would be tragic if once again the school year begins with too many children crammed in classrooms and as such are forced to begin the new year in a subpar educational environment. At the very least, the district should commit to following the teacher contract as recently approved. That means that if classes go over the agreed-to class sizes, a new class is added right away. No more acting like a new class can't be added after Labor Day. There's nothing in the contract that states' classes can't be added after Labor Day. And quite frankly, such an arbitrary deadline subjects students to a very long school day in a difficult environment, which makes for a very long school year for all, parents, teachers, and kids. While I'm shocked and saddened that class sizes were not reduced in this contract, at the very least, there should never be elementary schools with classes over 29 or 31 during the upcoming school year. A touch of common sense also needs to be applied to middle and high school classes. While the contract allows for large classes per subject, if one section brings down the overall average, it shouldn't take me pointing out that a high school math class of 42 means limited learning is going on in that one section. For goodness sakes, add the teacher. It's hard to argue that additional teachers can't be added, especially if the state provides additional funding. I understand that the current budget, as prepared, does not take into account the priorities of engaged 204, but the community edict of wanting smaller class sizes should no longer be pushed down the road. It's not a new issue, and smaller classes are just good policy. Some attempt at addressing this issue should appear in the upcoming school year. Otherwise, we will continue to borrow against our students' education to the long-term detriment of the kids in the district. Yes, the building repairs are important, but as has been stated often, this is a people business, and I would further define that to this as a child-centered educational business. And while no one advocates unsafe buildings or leaky roofs, likewise, no one should be okay with year after year shoving more and more bodies in a classroom for a difficult educational experience just to avoid the cost of a teacher. If the boiler goes out, it has to be fixed. We don't tell the students to just wear a sweater. Likewise, if 41 students enroll in an AP Chem, an additional section needs to be added. It should never be okay to have more students in one room than the curriculum dictates, or worse, selectively tell students that they are not allowed to take the class. Yet, this is the way the district has dealt with the education part of the students for too long. It's not in the kids' best interest, and it needs to be addressed now rather than later, and I hope this will finally happen in 204. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will begin with the superintendent report.
Can I have my picture?
What?
Here.
Ah, that was fun.
So I wanted to start out tonight by bragging a bit about our students. The middle school students that you see on the screen behind me are members of our middle school tech squad, who presented at the International Society for Technology and Education Conference at McCormick Place in Chicago at the end of June. ISTI is a huge conference. I've heard anything from 18,000 to 25,000 were there this year. It was the largest they've ever had. So it was a big stage. Our students, along with some of our staff, did a great job on the presentation and represented our school district fabulously. And I know that our board president was in the audience, because he actually rode the student bus as a chaperone. So you would have all been very extremely proud of our students. So I just wanted to see the picture that they took in front of one of the signs. They did a great job, didn't they, Mike?
Yeah, it was tremendous.
Yes, it was really good.
And the conference was really overwhelming. It was one of the largest conferences I've ever seen, so... It was one of the largest conferences I've ever seen, so, and kids did excellent.
Yeah. So, so on to other, in about four weeks, believe it or not, we will be opening our doors for our students for the eighteen-nineteen school year. Where did that summer go? It's, summer's always an extremely busy time of the year as we prepare to get everything in ready and in place for students and staff. So especially for Todd's department with operations and maintenance, they have that limited amount of time and multiple projects underway, so, but we will be ready. And then for tonight, we have one, you know, we have a crowd over there just anxiously waiting for us to talk about them. So we have one administrative hire tonight that we'd like to introduce you to and that is for our athletic director position at Matia Valley. So Jason, I'm going to ask you to stand. So we'd like to introduce you to Jason Ward. Jason comes to us from South Algen High School where he's served as athletic director. Jason has previous works, experiences as a middle school assistant principal, a high school dean and a special education teacher. So we are extremely excited to recommend Jason Ward for your approval to the position of athletic director at Matia Valley High School.
And so I need a motion to approve Jason Ward as athletic director for Matia Valley High School.
I'll make, I'll make a motion, the Board of Education approve Jason Ward as athletic director for Matia Valley High School as presented.
Second. You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, Jackie call the roll please.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye. Motion passes.
Congratulations, Jason. Jason, do you want to introduce us to your family who's with you?
Yes, my beautiful wife, Madi Sol, and my kids can join us as we are...
Good for you. You're going to need it, Jason.
Thank you all, honored, feel very blessed. I thank Dr. Dacko, Dr. Dr. Dacko and Mr. Brucker. We're definitely blessed and we're definitely glad to be a part of the school.
We're excited to have you to become members of our family, so welcome and have fun on your vacation.
Yeah.
Did you not teach him the mantra?
Well, you know, it's a little early.
Oh, it's never too early.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And as that is, there you go. And now we move to the consent agenda. I need a motion that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items E through J.
I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items E through J as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving to our action items.
I move that the Board of Education approve the fiscal year 2019 budget as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Strang, anything else?
No sir.
Has anything changed?
No sir.
The last twenty minutes.
State made payment?
No sir.
You never know at this stage.
Any other discussion? Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next action.
I move that the Board of Education approve the substitute pay increase as presented.
Get the chance to read the action item.
Yes, you should.
I'll second.
I second the motion.
We have a motion in several seconds.
Yeah, I just picked one.
Great. Just recommending to increase our substitute pay. When we look at comparable districts, we look at actually a proximity for this one. And so we looked at what Plainfield, Naperville 203, West Aurora, East Aurora, Oswego and what we pay for substitutes. We have the lowest daily rate and for the first time, we did see this year that our average daily fill rate fell below ninety percent for teachers and we do think that our substitute pay of ninety dollars a day does have a direct impact on that. So we are asking for an increase of ten dollars per day to move that to a hundred dollars per day. There was also some legislative movement about to have retired teachers do some more subbing instead of a hundred days to a hundred and twenty days. I'm asking if we can take our retired Indian Prairie teachers and do ten dollars more than what the daily rate is. So it would be a hundred and ten dollars an hour for our own retired teachers to come back and sub, which I think we do, well, I know, we value them and, and think that that would be a good thing to do as well.
Questions, comments?
Is your thinking that with retired teachers, that maybe we'll get them to come in more often?
That's what we're hoping. We're hoping that they'll come back more. They see that as a, hopefully that they see the compensation being a little bit more worth it to come in and substitute for us a little bit more.
I appreciate administration looking at this because that's something we've heard out in the community for a while, so, thanks.
And we now are competitive.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I think we're, we're pretty, we're going to be really close to most of those school districts, so.
And I guess I noticed that some of the districts do offer after a certain amount of days, a pretty substantial increase. So are we trying this now to see if that will do the trick?
Well, we want to do this first and, and I have had conversations with Mr. Strang about this being in the budget to do more than that. I think we would like to see, does this, you know...
Solve the problem.
Yeah, does this help that solution? I mean, everybody's struggling with it. I want to try this first. I fully understand the other ways that they're, they're doing that to try to get people to keep coming back. We've got to see if we can handle the capacity to do that at the same time, but let's first want to take this first step.
Okay.
Get them in the door.
Makes sense.
Other questions, comments? Hearing none, Jackie call the roll please.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Next go to the approval of gifts and donations report, second semester. Do I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the gifts and donations report, second semester, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the District 204 Schools, it's my pleasure to present to you the gifts and donation report for second semester of seventeen eighteen and also the cumulative report for the entire seventeen eighteen school year. As you can see, the district and our schools are very fortunate to be supported by a very generous community and many community organizations. In total, the district and our schools received over one point three million dollars in donations. We would like to thank a couple of organizations for their assistance. First, our PTAs are wonderful and they are very supportive of our schools. Secondly, as you all know, the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation is another major contributor to the schools and also our district and they do a wonderful job. Our community relations department within our district office is another key contributor assisting our students during times of great difficulty and need. They're very, very helpful for us. And finally, we have multiple organizations that provide our students with much-needed health care. Everything from vision screening, medical exams and medical treatment. All of those things are very important for our families. Our students and our families and schools are very fortunate to have so many willing and able supporters and we would like to thank all of them for assisting our students. So on behalf of District 204 Schools, we recommend the Board of Education approve the gift and donations report.
Questions or comments? I think on behalf of the board, I, thanks for doing that, thank you. I think our board truly thanks our entire community. You mentioned them, IPEF, PTAs, community relations does a great job, our healthcare providers and our parents, the excellence of our district is dependent on those extra donations. We get to do a little bit extra, we're blessed and we thank them also. Also want to thank the person, whoever came up with that format for gifts and donations is the most easily read format and report on the face of the earth, so it's well done.
I have to thank the wonderful, great Catherine Bowman for putting all that together. We just try to stay out of her way and let her do her magic and it works great.
It truly is magical, so we, we do have a, I can't, motion and a second, so Jackie, can you call the roll? Thank you.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Motion passes. And our last action item is the approval of a resolution directing the regional superintendent of Will County to certify the question of imposing a one percent county school facility state tax to the voters. So do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve a resolution directing the regional superintendent to certify to the Will County clerk the question of imposing a one percent county school facility sales tax for submission to the voters of Will County at the November sixth, two thousand eighteen general election.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We do have a motion and a second, Mr. Strang?
Good evening again, board members. I attended a meeting with a number of school districts in Will County to discuss the possibility of placing the county schools facility sales tax on the ballot for November sixth. I attended that meeting in March and it was obvious that I was invited late to that meeting. A number of districts, close to a dozen, had had several discussions about that possibility and had had several discussions with their Board of Educations about the possibility of passing such a resolution. I think we were invited because we're a large school district and we have eleven thousand seven hundred and twelve students who reside in Will County. The state authorizes the boards representing over fifty percent of the county student population to place a sales tax up to one percent on the ballot in that county. You can do it in quarter increments. If the voters then approve that through the ballot, the proceeds of the one percent increase are distributed to all of the school districts in the county based on the number of students for each district who reside in the county. So if it's fifty plus one students and there's forty-nine plus other districts that didn't pass it, they still benefit from the sales tax. Will County has one hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty students living in its boundaries. Fifty percent of that population plus one needs to be passed to put that question on the ballot. As I said, we represent eleven thousand seven hundred and twelve. More than a dozen districts have already passed the sales tax and others are in the process of committing to that. I've been on the phone with numbers of colleagues down there and they believe that we are very close to coming over that fifty percentile and getting that on the agenda. Everything in a county sales tax base is included in that one percent tax with the exception of cars, trucks, ATVs, boats and RVs, mobile homes, unprepared food. So if you went to Jewel and you picked up, you know, a bag of apples, that would not be a part of it, but if you went to Jimmy John's and picked up a sandwich, it would be. Drugs, which include over-the-counter and vitamins, farm equipment and services, those are all excluded from the tax. What can schools do with the revenues from that one percent sales tax? You can build new schools, put additions on schools, renovate schools, you can work on your technology infrastructure, you can enhance your security, you can work on your life safety, which is school code and disabled access, you can hire architects for planning, you can fix parking lots, you can demolish buildings, you can acquire land, you can hire energy consultants and you can improve masonry and roofs. What you cannot use it for is buses, textbooks, operating expenses and including instructional expenses and you cannot use it for salaries and you cannot use it for movable equipment. So we couldn't buy smart boards and move them around with that sales tax. Using the two thousand and sixteen sales number in Will County of sixty million six hundred and fifty-five thousand and seventy-two dollars and Indian Prairies eleven thousand seven hundred and twelve kids, given the two thousand and sixteen sales numbers, if the sales tax was to go through, it would mean an extra four point, five point four million dollars for Indian Prairie School District annually. The deadline for all of the school districts to pass the resolution is by Monday, August twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. So if the board was to pass it tonight, we would meet that deadline. We would need the other school districts to pass it, enough school districts to pass it by that deadline to, to meet the deadline. Then it would be certified with the county clerk by August twenty-ninth and on Election Day, all of the folks in Will County would have an opportunity to vote whether or not they support that or not. So this is just to put this question on the ballot. If it were to pass, the sales tax would go into effect on July first. The money gets distributed to the Regional Office of Education within ninety days, so that would be the Will County Regional Office of Education and we would receive the receipts sometime in October of two thousand and nineteen, so just over a year from now. We would be able to use those funds to be able to pay down our bonds if we wanted to, which would save taxpayers money. We'd be able to finalize elementary air conditioning, we'd be able to work on some of our deferred maintenance, we'd be able to work on some of our safety-related projects like door vestibules and classroom locks. All of those things were items that were identified in the community engagement process that we went through last year. So at this time, the administration recommends that the Board of Education approves the resolution directing the regional superintendent to certify to the election authorities of Will County the question to oppose a one percent county school facility sales tax to the voters of Will County at the November sixth, two thousand and eighteen general election. With that, I'll take questions.
Questions?
Just wanted to make a comment, if I may. For historical purposes, in two thousand nine-ten, in Kathy's first year on board, our district kind of made some significant cuts due to state funding and, at that year, I believe, fiscal year two thousand and ten, the state raised the general state aid from fifty-nine, fifty-nine, I think it was five thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars per student to a whopping six thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars per student. I think it went up like a hundred bucks or something like that. In two thousand and ten through two thousand and eighteen, they prorated state funding every single year. So school districts across the state, including our district, kept on getting less and less money, even though they made it seem like they were increasing the state funding. Now, while our state just came up with a new funding formula, there's no guarantee on that. But the point I'm trying to make here is that this Board of Education, even before I was on board and, and many of us were on board, has always tried to balance our budget. And in doing so, our facilities and operation and maintenance have taken the brunt of that. I think this one percent sales tax, now remember, it's one percent sales tax, let's be clear on that, is very little for the community. It's pennies and, but what it would help their local school district, including ours, is to now help our buildings where we have deferred a lot of that and, and through the old, our own study that we did, we're spending a third of what we should be spending on our buildings and operation and maintenance every year. So I think, while I don't like new taxes either, none of us do, this is a very inexpensive way for residents to help their local schools and get them to where they need to be and I think it's a smart and it's a fiscally responsible way of doing things. So I just wanted to make that comment.
And just to be clear, this is just to get it on the ballot, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, what I just wanted to make.
This is the November ballot, so the voters will decide in November, correct?
That's correct.
Other questions, comments?
I support the resolution. Having sales tax revenue as an additional revenue stream for the schools would take some of the...
some of the pressure off of relying on the real estate tax side of it. A lot of our home rule cities already have the power. Naperville and Aurora have the power separately and without further voter approval to revenue or to levy a sales tax, impose a sales tax. So this puts us on more equal footing with some of the municipalities. I think what is interesting also to note is that we don't have a state sales tax that is used for schools, but we, but there's growing momentum on this use of it countywide. So now there's 49 of the 113 counties have approved it and so there seems to be growing use of it as schools need additional revenue. They're taking advantage of this as an additional revenue source. What I, what's really bad, I think, about real estate taxes is it doesn't impact, it doesn't take into effect your income. It's just, here's your bill. And so if a recession hits, you still get the same bill regardless of your income takes a hit. But a sales tax is something you have a little bit more control. If your income takes a hit, maybe you're not shopping as much, maybe you're not incurring the tax as much. So I like the ability of some taxpayers to choose whether they want to pay this tax or not. Obviously, you know, you can't completely get around it, but it puts, it empowers the taxpayer more so than the real estate taxes. So I support the resolution.
Other comments, questions?
I think it's unfortunate that we're at this point as a state, that that's the way we have to solve this problem because it is a problem and Mark, your points were very valid. We've been borrowing from our buildings, as Justin's been saying, for years now and this seems like an opportunity, although that, I see some inequities in it because not everybody's getting the 1% sales tax in the end, but maybe that's where this will lead and so I'm in support of us at least joining the crowd to get it on the ballot and let the people vote on that.
Susan?
Jay, I think I may have, I just need clarification. I may have asked you this before because this is Will County and we cover, we serve, our schools are within a few counties. What impact would this have on the balance of our district? If this was approved by the voters and therefore the sales tax took effect, what impact would it have on the schools in our entire district?
Well, we would receive the additional revenue and given the 2016 sales would be roughly $5.4 million, we'd be able to use that throughout our entire school district to work on our needs.
That's, that's.
Others? Jackie, call the roll?
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Resack?
Aye.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Motion passes. We're now moving to our discussion portion of our meeting and today we're hearing about the accelerated placement program.
I'm just waiting for the slides. Good evening, everyone. We're pleased to be here this evening to talk to you about the accelerated placement program. I'd like to start by introducing our team. This team represents some work done by both the curriculum department as well as some elementary principals. I would like to add that Charles Sprandl was also an integral part of this, but he decided since we already had, there were no seats left, that he would sit this one out and that we would save his time for later on in the year. So just remember that as you're doing your planning. So I'd like to welcome Tracy Retner and Terry Russell, elementary principals at both Longwood and Brooks, and they're representing a group of elementary principals who met together to, with Laura Johnston, to come up with some guidelines. And then we have our directors of core curriculum at high school, middle school and elementary, Mike Purcell, Tara Fowler, this is your first time to meet Tara, and Joan Peterson. So with that being said, our purpose for this evening is to provide you an overview of Policy 6135 and to inform you about the processes that we have in place to meet the requirements of that policy. Just a reminder, this is connected to Policy 6135, but it's also connected to Policy 750, which we talked about last time, that looks at the change in the date for requirement for kindergarteners. So previously it was, you had to be five by September 1st. Policy 6135 allows for early entrance into kindergarten. Also just a reminder that this comes from Public Act 10421, which requires the adoption of the said policy as well as requires the district to provide an accelerated placement program. The highlights for this program, because it's a new policy, we wanted to tell you a little bit about the purpose. The purpose of it is to provide opportunities for students to develop their maximum potential and it was previously, some of the curricular and pieces of this were previously reserved for students in older grades or higher grades. And so this really wanted to allow for students who could work in those areas to be given that opportunity. Options include a single subject, other grade level and early entrance, as we talked about, into both kindergarten or first grade, and it's open to all students. I think that's key too, who demonstrate high ability and may benefit from this placement. So this evening we'll talk to you about what the plan should entail and we'll also share with you some things that we, as a district, have already had in place as well as some new items that will relate to this plan. Throughout, when you look at these three components, the decision-making process and the notification process and the assessment process, all three of these really serve to ensure that it's a collaborative piece so that parents, teachers, administrators all have a say into a student's placement or can recommend a student for an accelerated placement.
So as Kathy mentioned, we already have some opportunities in place in the district for students to take advantage of acceleration. One of those is we do offer accelerated math in grades three through eight. Through our middle school project, Arrow Program, we also offer some acceleration in English Language Arts for grades six through eight. At the high school level, when students go through the course selection process in grades nine through 12, there are many acceleration opportunities for them. As Kathy mentioned, we do offer a whole grade acceleration. This is a decision that's made at the building level, but in conjunction and consultation with district administrators. And then we also have options for early entrance into first grade, which we'll talk about a little bit later in the presentation. So the process that we'll utilize reflects the, as Kathy mentioned, the collaborative nature that we value within the district. These four components listed on this slide, should there be a student, parent, guardian, teacher or school staff member that is interested in initiating the discussion for potential acceleration, grade acceleration or early entrance, the first point of contact will be the building principal. The building principal will meet with that individual or group of individuals to have a collaborative discussion about what brings that initiation up for discussion. And based on that conversation, the decision will be made whether or not additional assessment data may need to be collected and/or reviewed based on current assessments to consider whether or not grade acceleration or early entrance would be appropriate. Should we be in a position where we want to collect additional assessment information, then there will be a timeframe for that to take place and then a second collaborative meeting will be scheduled with the family so that the school team and the family can discuss together the results of the assessment, review the picture of the student that those assessments help to tell and then make a recommendation for whether or not acceleration is appropriate at that time or not. The notes and recommendations from that meeting will become a part of the student's record and should there be any appeal from that meeting, then that would be handled at the district level.
Evening. Want to talk to you a little bit about the notification process that goes along with this, making sure the folks are aware of this and then how the decision-making process will continue on. We'll use the Indian Prairie District Handbook, which is published online and distributed to schools, to communicate this to the community at large, parents, guardians, about the processes that you're hearing about tonight and how we can, students can be accelerated and contact the schools. Again, we want to make sure this is a super collaborative process. We want to have kids and families involved and that we are fair and equal. We are identifying kids from all backgrounds and all different profiles in order to make sure that we are identifying what those students' needs are and accelerating them if that is the appropriate thing to be doing at that time. Again, as Joan talked about earlier, if through that collaborative process we come to some impacts, then we'll have some process in place to mediate those here at the district level. We need to use all sorts of indicators and information in order to make these assessments and just make these decisions. I want to make sure that we're using multiple pieces of information as we're doing that, not relying on one test or one impression or one argument in order to make that happen and using as many valid, reliable things as we can. The top couple of things on there are benchmarking or diagnostic assessments, AINебes, the COGAT recognizability test, some state and national tests like PACT, PSAT, SAT, and then things that we use in our classrooms, like our typical classroom assessments, our common assessments that are used across classrooms and across buildings. And then teachers' observations and feedback, both formal things that they do, report questions like that, and informal things, things that they learn and, you know, as they're interacting with students on a day-to-day basis.
Good evening. I'm going to start with early entrance to first grade and just a little history on that. In May of 2017, Laura Johnston and a cohort of principals met to develop a process and procedures for early entrance to first grade. So these would be new families to our district whose child was not age eligible for first grade, but had already completed a kindergarten program. The purpose of that plan was twofold. One is to first and foremost, make sure that children were appropriately placed and secondly, to provide for some consistency across all of our elementary buildings. So that process has been in place for one full school year and we have received very favorable feedback from our elementary colleagues about that process. I'm going to share that process. It's on the screen there and we use that as a springboard as we developed the kindergarten early entrance that Tracy is going to speak to in just a moment. So the first one is that the child must turn six by December 31st. They must have completed a kindergarten program taught by a licensed teacher, so that would be their previous experience. There must be a letter included from the teacher or director of that program indicating that they are ready for first grade and they must receive an end of the year progress report or report card indicating completion of a full year of kindergarten with regular attendance. If we determine that those criterion are met, then again, we referenced earlier, that collaborative process with the family, we would meet with the family and determine whether further assessments were needed or not in order to take next steps to determine what grade level is appropriate for that child. And I'll turn it over to Tracy to talk about kindergarten.
Thank you. Good evening. So this summer, we continued the effort to meet with a group of principals to talk about what was in front of us thinking about kindergarten early entrance. We had a lot of good discussions as a principal group and we ultimately came up with criteria, but also decided that we're going to reevaluate it at the end of the school year. See how it went, see how many students we have who have looked into that kindergarten early entrance option and see how they've done in kindergarten this year. So keeping that in mind, I'm going to go ahead and share the criteria that we came up with. Of course, all this starts with a conversation with the principal. A family might reach out to us and say, you know, I heard about kindergarten early entrance. What does that look like in District 204? So the first criteria that we discussed is turning five on or before October 31st. Must have completed a preschool program in the previous year taught by a highly qualified teacher. Must have a letter from that teacher or director of a program indicating that they believe that the student is ready for kindergarten. Must demonstrate good attendance in the preschool program. So we talked about that being, you know, 90% or above. And then we also discussed the importance of being able to see some progress within the student. So receiving an end of the year progress report or report card, which indicates some sort of kindergarten readiness when compared to what we look at, the Illinois Early Learning and Developmental Standards. So if at that point, all of this is met, then the decision-making process lies with the principal and we begin the assessment. And that's how it's a little bit different from first grade because at that point in first grade, the principal can decide, okay, that student is going to go ahead and have early entrance to first grade with or without some additional assessments. But in kindergarten, we discussed how important the assessment piece is and we talked about then if all of this is met, then we will go ahead and move on and do some assessments of the student to continue to evaluate whether or not they are ready to enter kindergarten early.
Do you want us to save questions until the end?
Go right ahead and go right ahead right now.
Oh, okay. I just noticed that maybe it's just something I'm not getting here, but I noticed that in the preschool, for, they must have good attendance in the preschool program for kindergarten early entrance, as in the 90% or above, but that's not required in the first grade program. Why is that? Am I missing something?
Yeah, that's, that's actually a discussion that we had and that we want to add to the first grade one that didn't quite make it into the file for tonight that you had received. But that's an important piece that we're going to be looking at for first grade as well. Good catch.
Thank you.
So did the research change for kindergarten? Because back in the ancient days, or at least five years ago when I was principal, the research in terms of early entrance to kindergarten was mixed at best. And then Malcolm Gladwell came out and that was partly research-based and partly anecdotal, but suggested that students who are on the older edge did better academically, physically and social, socially. And now it appears something persuaded people to have this early entrance. So is, did something change?
I don't think anything changed. I think the research remains the same, but I do think that there is recognition, and really, in my mind, this policy is recognizing that for a very few and students, it is appropriate for them to skip a grade and work from there. So there are some students, a narrow percentage, that it is best meets their needs by skipping the grade, including kindergarten for that to be. The research still shows that kindergarten's important, preschool's important, and we've heard more and more about how important preschool is, that's why we provide opportunities and things like that. But I think the impetus of this plan is for that narrow percentage of students who it might be, to recognize that there might be students that could benefit from that.
Can I just ask a follow-up to Mike's question?
Mm-hmm.
Because he brought up something and I didn't see that. When Mike was talking about the studies previously, he brought up the social, emotional part of it and I didn't see that anywhere here in here. And I will tell you, I've seen a lot of kindergartners and first graders in the last few years that might do exceptionally well academically, but they are just not ready socially, emotionally and behaviorally. And then where, that's a, that's a whole, where do you draw the line thing type of...
The team recognized that and as part of, you know, once those first criteria are met, then as they move to talk about what other information to collect, that's a big piece of it, is to look at social, emotional learning scales, to look at what did the teacher say from the preschool program, those kinds of things. So, you know, we know a big piece of learning is being able to access it and so we want to make sure that if we are putting students in another grade level, that they can access that information and that learning through that. So I think that what you've seen as far as the requirements, those are the first steps. After that, that social, emotional piece is a huge component of the assessment and the data that they would collect.
Then just one thing that I just wanted to, and you've heard me say this before, Kathy, as far as the accelerated, the course advancement, I appreciate, because I've been through this firsthand, I appreciate the collaborative team effort of bringing teachers, administrators, family, even the child altogether, because I've had a discussion on my own. I've had a discussion that on my own. And, and I am not an educator, so I'm not trying to tell you guys what to do because I trust you, I trust the process, but I hope that there is some type of criteria or parameter document that exists out there when looking at course acceleration because I've seen where all the things might point to yes, except for one test score, like the teacher recommendations there, the parents are ready, the child's ready, all the other scores aligned, but there was one of those test scores and now administration doesn't want to make the jump on it. So I hope that there is some document out there that outlines those parameters, but then I will also say, I hope that the administration team is also making the parents aware of the appeal process because I, I did not know about that in my own personal experience. So that's the only thing I would say is that I, I just hope we kind of standardize, you know, that discussion in accelerated course stuff. Thanks.
Thank you.
Susan, did you have something?
I did. As I look at the first grade entrance, early entrance requirements, so I have a question. If, if a student comes in from outside the district, they've completed a kindergarten program, but do not turn six by December thirty-one, what, what happens? If they, if they are appealing to come in as a first grader?
Right. Under our current plan, they would not qualify to go on to first grade. And that, the December thirty-first is looking at the age span of a student who could be five and a half versus another first grader turning seven. And so districts can set that timeframe.
Okay.
And we have found that at this point to be pretty on target with the students that, that we have considered coming into our schools.
Okay.
I had a question. Actually, I think when I first got on this board, one of the things, policies I looked at was the way we talked about holding kids back here, the red shirt kind of phenomenon that was going on and I kind of, my understanding at the time was, actually, that's not a very good idea because of the big difference in age and it actually is, the research was showing it was more detrimental than not. So now I, I appreciate that answer, that you're trying to limit this wide age span because that, that is hard at times and I am assuming that is still best practice is to try to keep the kids within socially, emotionally, academically, but age range predicts all that. So although I appreciate that we're trying to give some flexibility, I do see there are some times when there's, you know, there's point oh one percent of kids that might fall in and benefit from this. And I guess my question, and here we had Finland over here, so I'm kind of curious what they had to say, but I assume a lot of these practices were already in place when a parent would come and say, can I push my child ahead, that it would be a collaborative process. Are there any new assessments that you have decided to put in place because of this policy? Because I wasn't sure.
The newest portion of this is the kindergarten early entrance and so, you know, as we look at that, those are students that we don't have really a whole, a lot of data. So we intend to use the assessments that were listed as well as some social, emotional learning assessments and whatever information we need, we'll provide. We have not added any assessments as a generalization. However, if there was information that was needed, just as we would do with a student who wasn't performing to where we needed them to be, we would gather that information based on whatever tool that we had. So we're not, we're not limiting, but we're also not adding more standardized assessments across the district.
Right, right. So what is Finland, Finland was what, seventh, seventh grade, seven years old before they?
It had to be seven years old before you could go to first grade.
That's most of Europe, I think.
So.
Awesome.
No exceptions.
No exceptions. Again, I think the confusion is that the standards for entering kindergarten have not changed. So it is still five by September first and so this is just for those rare instances when it might benefit a student.
Mike, I have one. Since this is in effect for this beginning of the school year, correct? How is this communication kind of taking place within this interim since school let out and school starting in August?
Well, there are some folks that already know.
I'm, that's, there are. So how is it? I, I have that feeling, not surprised.
And, you know, we'll work with our building principals and our communications department to make sure that, you know, this first round is clearly communicated and that people understand what the process is going to be.
Are you already being inundated with requests? No? That's great.
At this point, I haven't, but with that being said, tomorrow I will. But I know some of our buildings have been, have had inquiries.
I don't think inundated, but I do think there are folks that are aware and I think the piece is, there's the, as I said before, is that there seems to be a misunderstanding that now that you can, that means you have to.
Oh, okay.
And so I think it's very important and we wanted to bring this process to you first and that we'll clearly communicate that there are processes and requirements that go along with it, that we will work and work with you to consider what's best for your child, but there are some things we need, some information that we need in order to help make the best decision.
So you're going to track that over time, like over this year, to see how many people engaged in the process, no matter at what level and what was approved, what was denied and for what reasons? That would be very interesting information.
Yeah.
And just anodally, either, just a quick question. My children, my last one graduated in two thousand seventeen and it's, so over the, you know, seventeen, eighteen years ago, it seemed that there were, that so many adults, parents wanted their children early access and there was a rush to, to move, you know, to see children accelerated. With the research, is that nationwide, has that seemed to have calmed down some? Is, is there not that same desire to, to rush children into first grade?
You know, it's hard to know because we don't always, we're not always aware of the discussions happening at the building. Many times it's a discussion between a family and a principal, or family and a guidance counselor and those types of things. We still see some of those things, we still see, especially in the area of math, but I can't tell you if it's more or less, but it's still there.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Last discussion is board update and the only thing I know is that IASB has received the two resolutions. I think they made some suggestions to incorporate them into some of the belief statements. I know that Ms. Peel and Mr. Carubis will be going in early August in front of IASB Resolution Committee on behalf of Mrs. Donahue also to review those and to see if they're included in the belief statements to be considered by the delegates in November. Yep. Think I'm correct?
Yep. We got the first two appointments.
Beautiful. Good work.
Good luck for the second time or third time, whatever.
Oh, yeah. The other thing is that the IASB school board governance distinction is being submitted and needs to be in by August first. We're finalizing that and it will be submitted by August first.
Awesome.
And keep aware of your emails because we have a few board goal documents and other things to look at and provide some feedback with before we finalize those. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and second, all in favor.
Aye. Aye. Did your exit slips please?